I love when everybody sits quietly in a room before a meeting starts.
At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chairman. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmary Mueded.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Present.
Chairman, let the record reflect, you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's agenda, setting session.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please read this in prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Board has two presentations, and first, we are proud to present a resolution that shines a spotlight on the exceptional accomplishments of three remarkable schools within Union County in the latest ranking by U.S. News and World Report. The prestigious rankings released last Tuesday have placed Union County at the forefront of the nation's best high schools. Among 18,000 eligible schools across all 50 states in the District of Columbia, Union County has three public high schools within the Union County Vocational Technical Schools that have secured positions within the top 100 list of the best high schools in the United States. One of these schools have even achieved the prestigious top position statewide, a truly remarkable feature. These rankings consider various essential factors reflecting the overall quality and excellence of high schools. They encompass college readiness, state assessment proficiency, state assessment performance, underserved student performance, college curriculum, and graduation rate. The three Union County high schools that have secured their rightful place among the nation's elite are Union County Magnet High School securing an impressive rank of number one in the state of New Jersey and number 26 in the nation. Academy for Information Technology with a commendable national ranking of 122 and number nine in the state of New Jersey. Academy for Allied Health Sciences ranking at number 10 in New Jersey and placed at 230 nationally. These accomplishments show the dedication of our educational community but also inspires to further our commitment to educational excellence in Union County. Over the years, the alliance between the Union County Commissioner Board and the Union County VOTEC has proven to be of utmost importance as we have worked hand in hand to enhance our educational system. And I would like to recognize and thank Superintendent Ryan for all of her continued hard work and support, as well as recognizing Tom Bastucci, who was the first Superintendent here at UC VOTEC, who was instrumental in its creation. Also joining us are members of the Union County VOTEC Board, who will be acknowledging in a couple of seconds also. We have Commissioner Phyllis Mirabella. We also have Commissioners -- give me one second.
Jean Perkins.
President Jean Perkins also, I apologize for that. And at this time, I would like to call upon Commissioners from the Union County Commissioner Board, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Garretson, and Commissioner Bodak, who are liaisons to the UC VOTEC, as well as Superintendent of Schools Gwen Ryan, Board of Education President Jean Perkins, Board of Education Member Phyllis Mirabella, and Assistant Superintendent of Schools Walt Smolson to join me as we present the resolution. And I would call upon also Tom Bastucci to join us also, please.
So, as an educator myself, I can't tell you just how thrilled I am to see that our county VOTEC is at the top. We knew it was, but to actually have that external validation by U.S. News and World Report, and we know how much we love them, right? It's just really thrilling to know that our students here in the county are being very well educated and that they are -- and that folks do know the type of -- you know, he put me on the spot. Yeah, that folks know that excellence is -- excellence -- okay, well, you don't have to put it in my -- We know that our students are excellent, and to get this kind of validation showing that they're excellent, it also shows that they're educated by professionals who make sure that they are ready for the world with all of the different programs and schools that we have. So I'm going to pass this back to the Chairman. Thank you.
At this time, round of applause for Commissioner Williams. At this time, I'd like to call upon Superintendent Ryan, if you will mind saying a couple of words, please.
Need my glasses. So to be recognized as in the top schools in the state and in the nation is really pretty incredible thing, and we're really excited and very proud of our community. It's something that, you know, we work hard, you know, to make sure that we educate students every single day, and I'm very happy to be able to see our community recognized for their hard work and accomplishment. And many years ago, the Commissioner Board took a chance on our schools, and you've since that time continued to invest and support in every way since then. So I certainly appreciate this opportunity to be able to say congratulations to all of you, and thank you for all of your support and, you know, efforts that you put into our district. It is your celebration as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan. Yes, I know one thing, that thank you was never wrong. And there's so many thank yous that we would obviously need to say that they would take the entire meeting. I especially want to recognize the fact that this is a team that has been extremely effective, extremely creative, and somehow it has trickled down to our wonderful students who are extremely effective and extremely creative. So we're very proud, very happy, and very grateful. Thank you so much.
There's a couple people who know I never meant a microphone I didn't love. For those of you who do not know me, I came before this august body 27 years ago asking for $5.1 million to invest in Union County Vocational School to create the first Magnet High School in Union County. There had been several in Monmouth County, which I was instrumental in starting. So I had that opportunity to come here, and you told me no. Come back after the election. I came back after the election, and you gave us $5.1 million. We created Union County Magnet High School. It was an enormous success. Came back a few years after that and said, I need some more, and you allowed us to create the Union County Technical High School. Came back a few years later and said, you know, there's an information technology high school is a great idea. What do you think? Here's 15 million. And then we came back and said, you know what? The Academy for Allied Health Science does have a nice ring to it, and you again said, here's 15 more. And then we came back finally and asked for 15 million for -- to create the Academy for Performing Arts. Every year, you said yes. And these are schools that are magnificent, as U.S. News and World Report will tell you. And you allowed that to happen without your support. There were Superintendents all over the state of New Jersey who wanted to do what we were doing in Union County but did not necessarily have the support of the Freeholder/Commissioner Board. You folks have been absolutely instrumental. Alex was at my retirement dinner and said he's the only guy I know who, at his last Freeholder meeting, asked for a check for $10 million, and we gave it to him. That was to create an addition to the Union County Tech High School. But none of this exists without you. These folks are just carrying that along. It's just if -- it's impossible to think it could possibly get better, but it will. Gwen can tell you about what happened yesterday or Tuesday. The state of New Jersey State Board of Education recognized Union County Vocational Technical School as a lighthouse district. One of how many? Five, six?
Five.
They will come to you. They will be back to you at the end of September, asking you to come to the school district for a celebration of that activity. This stuff is phenomenal. But again, without the support of this group, it doesn't happen. These people are doing a great job. Hang on to them. Don't let them get away. Thank you, Commissioner.
And right before we do resolutions, I definitely want to thank each one who's up here today, but most importantly, to the students, educators, and staff at the UC VOTEC who, every single day, day in and day out, are making sure they're providing high-quality education and students are receiving high-quality education. So definitely teamwork, like President Perkins said before. So thank you to each one of you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note, if you don't mind. I just want to also add in my congratulations to this board and the vision that Dr. Bastucci set up and Gwen Ryan continues and the Board of Ed and all their support is the part of the budget, in the state budget, with Senate President Skatari, who is committing millions of more state dollars to our vocational school to build another school, enhance one of our schools. I guess it's going to be determined, but I couldn't be more proud of the Senate President for his understanding, and he was a Freeholder back in the day and saw this start when I did. And he obviously saw the good that can do, and the fact that we're getting, you know, 30-plus million dollars for the VOTEC is just a continuing endorsement of the great work that's being done there. So thanks, Mr. Chairman. Let me make that --
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mirabella and Commissioner Betty Jan Kowalski to join me up front for the second presentation. Tonight, we gather to honor and recognize outstanding efforts of two individuals who have played pivotal roles in a pursuit of enhanced connectivity and transportation within Union County. We're privileged to have with us today Mr. Dunn, the founder of the Union County Connects, and Mr. Sexton, the Regional Director of the National Rails to Trails Conservancy, who will be giving us a presentation about who they are, their successes in creating Rails to Trails. Their dedication to promoting healthy lifestyles and active transportation throughout the Rails to Trails conversions have been nothing short of inspirational. Each one of us has been instrumental in our county's journey towards reimagining Rails to Trails, and I also acknowledge these two Commissioners up here with me who have been working closely, hand in hand, with these organizations. If you guys want to say some words first?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm actually delighted to be here and see this night happen. I've been working with this group for a couple of years, along with Commissioner Kowalski, and really see the tremendous benefit that is ahead of us and how we can turn these old rail lines into trails. Al Walcott always, you know, gives me some inspiration as far as, you know, his thoughts, speaking for environmentalists around Union County, and the fact that he talked to me a couple of years ago, even before this group was put together. I went to the High Line in New York City and saw what it could be and what we can do in this county, and I think it's a fantastic idea. I'm glad you guys are here. I'm glad you formed the group that you did to be able to pull this together, and you have the king here of Rails to Trails, and I'm really delighted to have you here, sir. So it's a great start, collaboration. I hope to continue for many years, and I hope to add this to our park system, something that really is so important these days, is to find recreational space, ways to get around Union County without a car. Stephen will tell you that. I don't think he's been in a car in maybe a couple of years. But I certainly am excited for this presentation, this collaboration, the teamwork that we have here between Union County Connects and Union County. So I'm really, really excited about it. Commissioner, any?
Thank you, Commissioner. And, excuse me, let me add my congratulations and thanks to you for your work. You know, here in Union County, we are always looking for better ways for people to get from one place to another, and bicycling, walking, other forms of transportation than cars. As any of us who are on the road today in a car, my goodness, the traffic of the kids going back to school and everybody being back at work, it just emphasizes the need for the kind of work that you're doing and that we want to encourage throughout the county. So thanks again, and I'll give it back to the Chair to proceed.
If Stephen and Tom don't mind coming up so we can present you with resolutions, and at the same time, I should also acknowledge Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner, who's been working alongside the organization, making sure we provide a greater collaboration. Tom, Stephen? And the whole entire organization, from both organizations, please.
It's all right. It's fine. It's fine, yes. Thank you for asking, though. Thank you for asking.
Stephen, take it away.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just wanted to make sure I clarify, I'm not the founder of Union County Connects. There are three founders, Mike Dury and Al Walcott, were the co-founders of it. And I think it's really important to say, because this is a huge team effort on everyone's part. None of us would be here without all of us. As Mike like to say, none of us are as smart as all of us. So quickly, Al has really been working with us since the beginning, and without him, we wouldn't be here. Commissioner Kowalski, thank you as well, and Commissioner Granados has been coming to our events and supporting us. I just want to make sure I say thank you to Vicki Durbin-Greig, Amy Wagner, Liza Betts, Phil Candell, and Rick Mateus. Everyone I've worked with and we've worked with at the county has really been wonderful. Just a quick, I guess backstory for me, I've lived in Union County my whole life. I basically grew up in Nomahegan Park, riding my bike around, and I traveled down the Olmsted Greenway to Echo Lake Park, Echo Lake Park through Lenape Park, and I love it. The original vision for the parks here in Union County was the Olmsteads, and we have a wonderful parks system. That being said, I don't think it was ever quite completed. And it's interesting, about 100 years ago, the Great Depression and then World War II kind of distracted us from that, and I think 100 years later, in 2020, when we had COVID, it refocused on the need for that. So we have a lot of energy behind it. We're really excited about everything we're doing, and I'd also just want to point out, good solutions solve multiple problems, and great ideas catch on like wildfire, and that's why we have everyone here today. We have a lot of talent, and I just want to point everyone out. So Mike Dury is an avid kayaker. He's kayaked every river in this county. We know about the Raleigh River Parkway system, the Elizabeth River Parkway system, Passaic River Parkway system. He's been on all of them. Al Walcott has been on the Parks Advisory Committee back when it was around, and he's been involved with the county for a long time. And Jay Rubino is not here tonight, but he's been on with us since the beginning and has really gotten this going for us. And Jackie Lombardo is not here tonight, but I want to make sure I recognize how much people really care about this. You know, that sign right there, this is her business. She makes stuff like this. She charges money for this, but she volunteered her time and her expertise to make our signs, to make our vision. Who else? Bill Nierstedt is right here. He's one of the former -- he's a former planner for the city of Elizabeth, and I think he rode his bike here too. No, he took the bus, maybe. Bill and I are, you know, we don't travel around by car very much. John Leo is here. John Leo is on the Environmental Commission in Berkeley Heights, airplane pilot, so he actually gets to fly around to different cities and sees what's possible in other parts of the country, and I think we have the bones of what can be done here. Jeff Grobe is not here, but I want to just point out the work that he's done for us. And I'm going to say it here, if you haven't heard me say it yet, we need a bridge over Route 22 to finish our work on the Raleigh Valley Railroad. This is the low-hanging fruit, and that's why Tom's here tonight. In Summit, they've already started building. We have $1.5 million awarded for Kennerworth and Roseville Park, but we need to get over Route 22. And I know it's a big haul, but I think we can do it. And Tom's going to talk about funding that is really a perfect opportunity for this to be done. And so Jeff Grobe drew up the preliminary plans for us already, and again, that's his business. That's how he makes money, but he did that for this for free because he knows it's a great idea and he wants to see it done. Yeah, so I'm going to hand it off to Tom now, but just kind of like we said, the vision of Union County Connects is to connect the whole county through a system of trails. I ride my bike everywhere. I was actually hit two years ago and broke my collarbone while riding the bike. I want more people to ride, but if we don't provide safe ways to do it, safe ways to walk, people are going to get hurt. And when you talk about the problems of our time, climate crisis, environmental crisis, mental health crisis, this solves a lot of those problems, or at least helps make them a little better. And that being said, I'm going to hand it off to Tom Sexton. Tom's with the National Rails to Trails Conservancy. The Rails to Trails Conservancy paid for the sign, and we wouldn't be here without Tom, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Even after 32 years of working on rail trails, I always get a lift from working with people like Steve and Mike and the rest of the UCC gang. And also, let's not forget, up in Summit, the great work that they started several years ago and opened their bridge just lately, Rob Rubino and all those folks. What a great legacy you are all leaving for Union County. It's something to behold. Rails to Trails Conservancy is a national nonprofit. We're headquartered in Washington, DC. There's 50 of us. About half of those folks, including me, are deployed to the field, and I work in the 10 Northeast states, including New Jersey, and I provide technical assistance and work on state policy and legislation. The technical assistance we provide can be to volunteer groups, it could be to a municipality, it can be counties. I work with MPOs, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, very key in all of this. I work with state DOTs and state DPs and DNRs, Natural Resources Agencies and environmental regulatory agencies. And moving forward, we're going to continue to work in Union County, continue to aid where we can, UCC, and to get that, all that miles done from Summit to Roseville Park. Now is such a good time to invest in rail trails and rail trail networks. There is serious money that is available, and we can count on it for the next few years, that will pay for acquisition, planning, design, engineering, construction, and even maintenance. Yeah, and that's not a well-known fact. Last year, when the new transportation bill passed, there was this one little tweak they made to it, and so this isn't something that state DOTs are really promoting yet, so the county's going to have to do some pushing to get them to open those coffers, because it's a really, really new thing. It almost, not quite, but it's a strong second place in rivaling the -- in 1991, when I began, and there was a sea change, and it's still occurring, it's every year, they've continued it, and that's where federal highways administration will fund bicycle and pedestrian and rail trails and other non-motor ride facilities. And it's just not an option. They must do that. If they don't spend that money, they lose it, it goes back to Washington, DC, and they give it to another state. So these are unprecedented times, and I'd like to work together and walk together and visit Union County even more so that we can add to the 24,000 miles of rail trails in the United States. You will play a big part in that. So thank you for your support to the rail trail movement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate both organizations for your hard work and always keeping us abreast of what's taking place in Rails to Trails, so thank you for that. We'll be approving the communications during tonight's regular meeting, and first up, Department of Economic Development, Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has one --
Oh, sorry.
-- has one resolution for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Baker?
Excuse me. I have questions on items one and two, but we'll start with the first one that has to do with the purchase of a truck. Can you describe the type of truck that we're talking about here?
Absolutely. This is the replacement of a Chevy Suburban. The purchase is of a Ford Expedition.
A Ford Expedition?
Correct.
Okay. And the second question I have is on item two that has to do with the purchasing of rock salt.
Correct.
I guess this is through a co-op?
This is a -- I'm sorry, this is a public bid.
Public bid? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. What I had a question about was the amount that's being purchased here over a 12-month period. How is that amount determined? You know, 780,000, if you will?
Sure. So we do a unit price for the salt. We have historical information as to how much we've used on our roads. We have 176, just under 176 miles worth of roads, so you can calculate how much salt you need. We put out a public bid, and it's a unit price, so then we get that unit price. We award this contract. We only purchase what we need. So for instance, the past two years, it's been a light winter. We haven't used the entirety of our account. We used actually a lot less, but we have to make sure that we're prepared for larger storms.
Sure, sure. Okay, so that contributes to the unit cost?
Yes.
Anticipation of larger storms?
Correct. Yes, we have to anticipate storms, do the best we can to anticipate storms, ensure that --
What I had a question about was the amount that's being purchased here over a 12-month period. How does, how is that amount determined? You know, 780,000, if you will?
Sure. So we do a unit price for the salt. We have historical information as to how much we've used on our roads. We have 176, just under 176 miles worth of roads, so you can calculate how much salt you need. We put out a public bid, and it's a unit price, so then we get that unit price, we award this contract, we only purchase what we need. So for instance, the past two years, it's been a light winter, we haven't used the, the entirety of our account. We used actually a lot less, but we have to make sure that we're prepared for larger storms.
Sure, sure. Okay, so that contributes to the, the unit cost?
Yes.
Anticipation of largers, of larger storms?
Yes, we have to anticipate storms, do the best we can to anticipate storms, ensure that we have enough salt on hand.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you much, County Engineer. Department of Finance Director BB Taylor?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Finance has six resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you very much. Director Taylor? Department of Human Services Assistant Director Karen Dinsmore?
Good evening, Chair and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has six resolutions on this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Can you just provide a little more information for the public on number five, the emergency, the emergency food distribution from Garjulo? The amount is $636,000. Seems like the need is still great.
Certainly. Yes, this resolution, as well as number six, have to do with the food providers that have supported our food drives in the past. As you know, we're looking to continue those drives in the holiday period this year. This will allow them to start the preparation. The need in the community is as significant as it ever was. It's largely driven by the cost of food right now. As you know, more people are employed than had been at the start of the pandemic, but the cost of food has gone up. So the food drives really will support the population, particularly at the end of the year, when we all should be celebrating the holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Anyone else? Just in reference to number one, Assistant Director, what are some of the top languages that we see when interacting with the public?
Actually, as you know, we use both Geneva, and we use voice iPads, because we have such a diverse population that come to see us at the Division of Social Services. Spanish is one of the top languages, of course. Haitian Creole is another very common one. We have African languages like Swahili that we see frequently, Polish, really, it's languages from all over the world.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Assistant Director.
Thank you.
Department of Parks and Recreation County Manager Ed Omen?
Thank you, Chairman. The Department of Parks and Recreation has four items on tonight's agenda, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board?
Mr. Chairman? Who's speaking for the Department of Parks and Recreation?
County Manager Ed Omen.
Right over here. I guess I should keep my head up. Okay, I just had a question on item number one, Mr. County Manager. We were talking about playground equipment. Excuse me, I should really have some water. Are we purchasing new equipment, or is this a continuation of upgrading our, our park systems?
Commissioner, this is for, excuse me, it's for Rutgers Avenue Park in Hillside. It's one of our, one of our parks with the oldest equipment, we're going to be putting brand-new equipment in there.
Okay.
So it's a purchase for brand-new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much. County Manager? Department of Public Safety Director Dennis Burke?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Department of Public Safety has two items on the agenda for your consideration. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you very. Question for number two. This service gets also provided to local health departments across the county, too, right? For municipalities?
Yes, yes, for the local service.
So definitely working together. All right, thank you very much. With that said, there's Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the Commissioner-sponsored resolutions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.[1787.23]